Laura, are you calling roll? Or I?
I will call roll, yes.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Miznick. Rock Hall.
Here.
Sargent. Sweeney Moran.
Here.
This. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify on the record that the Board of Education has issues to discuss an executive session. And I'll have a motion here in one second.
It should be stapled to your script.
Can I make a motion, Kathy?
How about this one? Kathleen's. Okay.
Kathy, if I could make a motion, I Lisa Sweeney Moran, make a motion pursuant to CRS 2464024A to convene an executive session to discuss real estate matters. That's it.
Second by Nicole. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Beth was trying to get into FYI.
We can add her later. Let's just get going on the motion and then we can figure that out.
Okay. Okay. Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Rock Hall.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We are now moving into executive session. Thank you. Can you call the roll, please?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Miznick.
Here.
Rock Hall.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
This. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson, I'll turn it over to you to do the introductions.
Thank you, Board President Gebhardt, members of the board. We are excited to have with us this evening Dr. Jonathan Dings and Dr. Delora De La Cruz to speak to you all in regards to strategic plan metrics. Board members, as you'll recall, several years ago, we applied for a state grant to have a collaborative process to work with members of our community to establish our strategic plan metrics around big ideas of closing opportunity gaps, achievement gaps, and reducing disproportionality. So we're excited to present to you the information that we have today. Based on the committees that we pulled together and the metrics that we selected, not all of the data comes in at one point in time. So we will be coming back to you in the fall with some additional metrics once that data comes in. And we've also tried to give a comprehensive overview of not just the strategic plan metrics, but other initiatives and data points that we have that align to our Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan. Today, you're going to hear lots of information. And so we've got 30-some slides, so it's going to take a moment. I apologize for that in advance. But we wanted to be very comprehensive as we think about identifying the bright spots, some of which are very promising leading indicators of what we hope is great work that is ongoing and yet to come, and then continued opportunities for improvement. We know that even though we've been doing really great work, that we still have challenges that is going to take years and years to overcome. So doing the right work year over year. And so with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. De La Cruz to kick us off.
Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. As you recall, back in the fall, we shared with you information about the strategic plan Altogether for All Students, as well as its metrics and the data that we had to share at the time. Tonight, my colleague Jonathan Dings and I will be sharing the end-of-year outcomes that we have at this time. To begin, we want to just set the foundation of our work across the district, of course, which is centered in the strategic plan and can be summarized with these four themes: challenging, relevant, engaging instruction, customized supports, community and family partnerships, and a positive and inclusive culture. So we're going to be touching on each of these themes this evening. And while we have comprehensive metrics in the strategic plan, not all of the data is available at the same time of the year, as Dr. Anderson indicated. So tonight, we'll be sharing the data for the metrics that you see here in blue. And we anticipate having data for the other metrics in the timeframes that you see in parentheses next to those that are in black font. And we'll be sharing those with you when we have that data. So as you can see, the metrics are categorized in those three themes or categories that Dr. Anderson referred to: closing achievement gaps, closing opportunity gaps, and reducing disproportionality. We're going to frame tonight's presentation with these categories. And as we mined the data, we did find continuing gaps. We found some improved gaps or proportionality, and we found some bright spots. So you'll notice on some of the slides that we've indicated a bright spot with a yellow bright spot icon in the top right-hand corner. As we look at the indicators for the area of closing the achievement gaps, we'll primarily be sharing reading, achievement, and growth data, since that's what we have at this time. And we'll share math data when we have that in the fall. So first, our kindergarten through third grade reading levels are mostly at pre-pandemic levels. So 67% of our kindergarten through third grade students were on grade level this spring, which is a point lower than those on grade level in the spring of 2019, which was our last full in-person school year. And we're noting that the achievement gaps are mostly unchanged. The fall-to-spring SRD, or significant reading deficiency reduction, is lower this year than in 2019, but improved in terms of the spring percentage of students with SRD at our dual-language schools, as well as at some other schools, which we'll be sharing more about. So just to flesh this out a little bit, the kindergarten through third grade students who meet spring reading benchmarks is about the same at the end of this school year that we've just completed as during our last full pre-pandemic school year of 2018-19. This is even more notable in the face of what we knew from our teachers, from our leaders, from our data, that many students entered this school year one to two years behind. So.
And just two points to note, and I'll just be jumping in, if that's okay.
Yeah, great.
Board members, if you'll remember, as we navigated the pandemic, right, and pulled together a group of individuals to help guide how we come back to school, it was our youngest learners that we prioritized, bringing them back in, our students in grades K through 2, who had the most in-person instruction during that time. And then also, this is on I Ready. Is that correct? That's the measure we're using here?
The measures are I Ready Assessment and I Station Assessment. We'll talk more about those.
Okay. Very good.
So, yes, having our students, kindergarten through third grade, nearly meeting the same percentage on grade level benchmarks as pre-pandemic is a bright spot. And the percent of students identified with an SRD, or significant reading deficiency, increased slightly overall, up 2% from 2019, as did the percent of students served on a read plan, although not at all schools. You'll see more detail about that on the next slide. And just a reminder about SRD, which we're going to be referring to a lot, and read plans. So in SRD, when students are identified as being significantly below grade level in reading, teachers administer a diagnostic assessment to determine specific areas of need for reading improvement. And they use this information to collaboratively develop an intervention plan, which is called a read plan. And that's intended to bring the child up to grade level proficiency. Of course, the read plan is part of the Colorado Read Act and stands for Reading to Ensure Academic Development. So a read plan is initiated in kindergarten through third grade when a student scores below the cut scores that are established by CDE on the I Ready Assessment in English or on the I Station Assessment in both English and Spanish. Students are to continue to receive intervention support until they've met the reading skill competencies for their current grade level. So that, the percentage of students identified with an SRD changed from 9% to 11% is not entirely surprising, given the conditions of this year. And knowing that we entered this year with students who had lost some ground, as Dr. Anderson referred to during the pandemic, and that teachers have been really diligent appropriately about placing students on read plans. So digging into our SRD data just a little bit more, what you see here is that several of our schools have demonstrated a reduction in the number of kindergarten through third grade students identified with an SRD from fall to spring. More schools than what you see here did reduce that SRD number. However, for the sake of sharing substantial reductions, we're showing you here the schools where the number was decreased by at least five percentage points. What you see at the bottom is that all of our dual-language elementaries reduced the number of students identified with an SRD. You'll see, we did include all of them here to show that, although only Uni Hill and Columbine met that five percentage point reduction marker. We're naming SRD here instead of read plans because in the spring, after testing, there's not enough time to initiate additional interventions to determine if the student should be removed from a read plan, even though they meet that spring cut score.
Excuse me. Can we ask questions as, or do we wait till the end?
Rob, it's my gut with 30-some slides. Maybe we should do it as we go along. Is that all right with you all?
Sure.
We have an hour, so.
Okay.
So can I ask a question? If you go back to the previous slide, when you're looking at 9%, 11% of what? Can you explain that to me?
Sure. So what we're referring to here is the percent of students identified with a significant reading deficiency per those CDE reading assessment cut scores. And so back in 2019, which we're doing a lot of comparing to our last full in-person school year, so that would have been the spring of 2019, we had 9% of our kindergarten through third grade students identified with a significant reading deficiency. And that's up 2% this spring that we just completed, the spring semester we just completed, to 11%. So it's a 2% increase of students identified with a significant reading deficiency.
And that's due to the pandemic? Or what was the cause for the increase?
I don't know that we're... I think the cause could be different for every kid, right? I don't know that we could generalize. I think the pandemic certainly had an impact. But also, if you were to say that and then you were to look at the percentage of students meeting benchmark as similar, I don't, you know, I think the pandemic just impacted some kids more than it impacted others. So these are just kind of generalities, but we don't want to get into specifics and misdiagnose.
Thank you. Now, the 9%, if you put it into numbers, of kindergarten students, I don't know what the total number of kindergarten students we have, but 9% of the total is whatever.
So the kind of change that we saw would be from 133 kids in the spring of 2019 at kindergarten, who had that level to 148 kids now. And there are comparable kinds of changes across the grade levels. But we're talking about roughly 800 kids in either case. We're a little bit smaller as a district at the early elementary level, so.
It's an important point for Jonathan to make. As we try to really present this data, we try to be as accurate as possible. At times, we'll use percentages. At times, we'll use numbers. And we're going to use what makes the most sense in comparison, so.
Richard, are you done? For this slide, at least. Lisa?
I feel like I Ready has some problems when we're looking at K-2 kids and it being a technology format, the way they're testing, how accurate this is to what they're actually learning. So I guess my question is just, when we're looking at these numbers and these drops, and then I think to come some gains, like, do we also have conversations with these schools where we're hearing from the teachers and the administrators that they feel like this reflects what they're seeing in the classroom?
I think that, yeah, we have a spectrum of perceptions about that. Many teachers use a body of evidence, of course, to determine student needs and whether or not a student truly fits into a read plan criteria. And I believe that overall, our leaders and teachers, I certainly am not speaking for every single one of them, but find that the scores that we see in I Ready, especially broken down into the, you know, the five distinct or discrete skills of reading, do provide a pretty reliable guide in terms of what students need, where they need to grow, what kind of interventions that they need. But that body of evidence is really what's used overall for determining student needs.
I'm just curious, since we're just looking at the I Ready scores here. I mean, for kindergartners, I think a lot of this often is them learning how to use the technology throughout the course of the year as much as anything else. So I was just asking whether we sort of felt like these schools that we're highlighting also were giving feedback that this felt like what they were seeing.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. We hear that a lot, and I heard it certainly as a principal, too, that, especially at kindergarten, from fall to spring, students' technology, even technology abilities, are very different. And yet, I Ready and I Station are the assessments that CDE, is among the list of assessments that CDE tells us are approved for use in making these determinations.
Questions down here? Kitty?
Yeah, on the next slide from that. So, one, I have a hard time seeing that, and my computer somehow doesn't think there's any Wi-Fi in this room. But you had said something about only the bottom three schools, Columbine, Pioneer, and Uni Hill, hit the 5%. So you're talking about improvement from fall to spring?
Sure. So just to explain that a little bit more, all of the schools you see on the screen, except for Pioneer, which was very close, hit that 5% point or more
Okay.
reduction in SRD. There are many more schools who did reduce the number, percentage of students identified with an SRD, but just for the sake of the slide itself, we went with that 5% marker. And then all of our dual-language elementary schools did reduce the SRD identification. But Columbine and Uni Hill were the two, Columbine and Uni Hill were the two that met that 5% or more marker.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I just didn't get the whole thing that you said, so.
Be back.
So Kitty, Rose is going to come up and help you with your computer while we keep going.
Good, because I tried turning it off and rebooting it.
Nicole? So I had to have a couple of quick questions. How'd you pick the 5%? Was that arbitrary, or is that something that if we keep doing 5%? I mean, is there some statistical significance to the 5%?
Because schools' variance ties, it would be impossible to pick one number that was the number that would work for each school, right? 5% is a number where I think it's worth talking about, or at least asking about, is something different happening. At the same time, we'll look forward to even more diagnostic information that will say, how good was the growth that individual kids made overall? The layer of detail under this that we don't have yet is, how good are the gains on actual scale scores? Because sometimes you can get a 5% gain by making huge gains with individual kids. Other times, you make that gain because you had a bunch of kids who were just below the cut point and made okay gains, but not outstanding gains. So there's a lot more we can do as we have more data.
When did we implement the screening, the dyslexia screening for all kindergartens? Was that 2019, or was it after that?
For two years, we've done groupings of schools. Next year is when we're screening all students in kindergarten for dyslexia.
I was just wondering if maybe that added to the increase in the numbers of students, because we were screening more students, maybe.
This is the fun part, right? Like, so
Guessing.
You know, well, what we're trying to do today is just to present the information as it sits, right? You're not going to see a bunch of root causes or deductions on, you know, what caused those things. I think that's for individual schools with district academic leadership, Jonathan's expertise, to start to dig in, to see what's working, what's working at some schools and not at other schools, what are the things that we're seeing as a system that are working. And it's always more complicated than folks would want it to be. And we don't want to jump to conclusions that might not be causation, but more just happenstance or even correlation. So that's the fun part. But I mean, so, and also the sad part, when we look at things that aren't working. So, but, you know, our goal here today is to be transparent, to share the information. You know, you, as board members, will have lots of follow-up questions, I'm guessing, on what happened here? Why did this happen? There's lots of curiosities that will come out of this conversation. And then the ongoing conversations, like Lisa shared, like, you know, is I Ready the right thing? Is, you know, are any of these measures individually the right thing? I don't think there's one measure, right? These are the things that the law boiled down. This is why we're using these today, and we don't have CMAS. But, so, yeah, I mean, I think that that's the work of our team to really try to tune in on what's working, where are there opportunities to get better. And Janice, Jonathan, I'm sure could tell you at length, more complicated, because you don't want to just assume because you did one thing and something got better. Sometimes it's not the reason what you did. Conversely, you did something, something got worse. It might not be the reason. So just more complicated.
So at the end, Rob, I think we should come up with a process for how we best follow up on this.
Absolutely.
Because it sounds like there'll be a lot of information to do that. I have one more question, Richard, and then I'll call. Have all our teachers been trained the way they were supposed to on reading? The K through 5 teachers pursuant to the legislation?
We're in process. I don't believe that we're 100% there yet. And I want to say the deadline is next
Yeah, it's this summer.
For August 1st. So we do have some teachers that are going to be completing that over the summer.
Okay. Richard?
Just a quick question, and you may answer this as you go along, but I don't know if you will. The Read Act, if it hasn't changed from the time I learned about it, required parental engagement in the development of the read plan. And I'm just curious to find out if, in fact, families are involved in developing read plans. And if families are involved in developing read plans, you know, I'm not going to say that might be able to help the increase in reading or not, however, there is that school-to-home partnership there. Did you look into any of that at all in this process?
I don't think the team looked into that as part of this, but I do think it's a good follow-up to consider and think about as we start to think about it. The schools where there were really big, we made a significant difference in the percentage of students who had significant reading disabilities to engage some parents. How were you involved? Were you not involved? And to start to measure that. But they haven't done that at this point.
All right. Next slide. Unless there are other questions.
All right. We do want to call out a couple of bright spots, specifically the reading gains at Cole and Sanchez, which are measured here through the I Ready reading assessment. So we're just going to walk through these I Ready graphics. What you see on this slide is the I Ready visualization of fall-to-spring improvements in reading, in students reading on grade level. So the theta triangle on the left is the beginning of the year, or BOY, as you see, signified there, data. And on the right is the end-of-year data, or EOI, as you see, signified in the parentheses. So at Cole, we see that they began the year with 47% of students on grade level. So that's what you see in the green section of the triangle. And then by the end of the year, had 75% of students reading on grade level. And then looking at the red section of the triangle, which shows students who are two or more grade levels behind, Cole shifted from 14% of students at the beginning of the year to just 8% of students in that category at the end of year. For Sanchez, which is the triangles on the bottom, we see that they began the year with 18% of students on grade level, and by the end of the year had 44% of students on grade level. And then the red section tells us that Sanchez shifted from 35% of students who were two or more grade levels behind to 21% of students in that category. And we feel that these are impressive gains in two of our high-support schools. And especially remarkable, knowing that just a couple of years ago, Cole had the lowest growth in the entire school district, and that Sanchez was one of the lowest-performing schools in the state. And next, Jonathan is going to share our secondary data as measured with the Common Lit Reading Assessment.
Did you have a question, Lisa?
No.
Okay.
So Common Lit is a reading assessment given up to three times a year. And it's new to us. So what we're showing is really meant as baseline data. Median achievement percentiles, right, say something about how well students rank according to all the students nationwide who took the test. And what you're seeing here is a matched group, so we could sort of look at progress over time, right? So we should have some caution in looking at this, because it's a new measure to us, and we want to be really careful not to overinterpret the results that we see. But in the added piece, too, is we allowed one middle who really liked using I Ready to keep using that for this year. So we're also missing a school. That said, when we examine the results of this test from fall and spring side by side, we see a fairly consistent pattern, right? That wouldn't, that these are changes that are comparatively small over time, so we wouldn't want to suggest that gaps are opening or closing, but that we would instead look at these as a baseline for thinking about gaps that we see in the future. On the next slide, we see the same kind of pattern generally at high school, with the same caveats about it being a new measure, and some added ones about this is used extensively at grade nine, not as much as at grade 10, and then increasingly little amounts in 11th and 12th. So again, we have a baseline for thinking about the kind of growth we may see over time. We note some gaps that we see on other measures that we have. And we look forward to, as we use these measures over time, having the system adjust to the measures and give us information that we think will ultimately be more easy to interpret over time.
Nicole?
I have a question about the Common Lit Assessment. Is this different from the, is it a writing assessment? Is it a computer-type multiple-choice assessment? What does this assessment look like?
Right. So it's a multiple-choice-based test, and it would be organized around standards, right? So if you're taking it, you might get a, there's a number of questions around character development, if the passage is around fiction.
And then are there specific grades, or does everybody in high school and everybody in middle school take it? Because you showed one slide with middle school data and one slide with high school data. So is it all grades in those in secondary, or is it specific grades?
There are tests at each grade.
Richard, do you have a question?
So when you're looking at the overall, who's all included in the overall? All students?
All, and in the particular picture that we're showing here is a matched group of students who had scores in both fall and spring.
Did you do anything with just white Anglo, English-speaking students? I mean, is that, are they in here in the overall? Or I guess what I'm looking for
Yes.
is a comparison in terms of the baseline between the white students and your Latino students, for example. Where?
Right. They're, the white, 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 white students are in the overall. The white students are in the overall.
Your instincts are right, there is a large gap. I mean, I think that's what you're alluding to, right? And there is a large gap, again. And it's a theme you will continue to see as we go through this presentation. And as we've talked about, the narrowing and then eventual closing of these gaps is our work. But there are some bright spots. This is a baseline data that really accentuates the gap that we continue to see.
Rob, is this data disaggregatable to sped to? Would we be able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe when we figure out next steps, we could think about that too. Any other questions? We'll keep moving.
So in moving to the category of closing opportunity gaps, as we share information here about our efforts in this area, we're going to be looking at metrics related to supportive school climate, opportunity to accelerate in math, and access to literacy interventions. This data points to a bright spot in student perspective about supportive school climate in grades five through 12. In response to the survey prompt, my teachers care about me. So what we see here is that students agree or strongly agree that their teachers care about them at a high rate that is similar across groups in general, although slightly lower for African-American students. Results are higher for fifth graders, 97%, than from middle-school students at 90% or high-school students at 88% and are fairly comparable to pre-pandemic levels. And from here, Jonathan will walk us through the TLCC survey outcomes.
So the Teaching and Learning Conditions in CARBAS survey is given every other year. And new this year was given to our professionals. It wasn't limited to teachers and administrators. What we saw in the results was 77% favorable in the answers being given when people are asked a question about the conditions at their school. Our favorability rating is just above the one we see statewide. It's 76. And while we need to take, you know, some caution in making comparisons over time, it's a little bit lower than we saw the past time that this was given, in 2020, immediately pre-pandemic, and a bit lower you get than the 2018 one. But what we got here though is still over 2,000 people answering. This represents a 60% overall participation rate with some acknowledgement that we need to get a bit better in the future about finding ways to survey, to support folks, particularly educators, to even improve on what we have. But this is a measure of the climate taken over time where we know that working conditions in schools just got harder. So as we look at the data, you know, one way to think about survey data is to compare with what's going on statewide. And when we look at the results by category, right? We can see there are seven categories where folks on staff see what's going on in their school as being, sorry, on average in BVSD, folks see what's going on in a more favorable way than what's going on statewide. Those areas are just overall, how they experience their school and their sense of working there. They see it in terms of the support from our community. As principals, they would see it in terms of the support from the district. They also see it in terms of instructional practices and support given. They see it in terms of the opportunities that they as a staff have around leadership. They see it in how student conduct is managed from their perspective. And they see it that way as a new staff member. The other areas are ones that are either about even or not as high. One other way to think of results is in how they've changed over time. And in order to do this, right, we have to limit the 2022 results. We just got to teachers and administrators because that's who was given this in 2020. We would see, right, confirming our idea that conditions got harder. The only area where there was an increase was in terms of perceptions of new staff. So we have some, I think, useful information from this to sort of put different ideas to our overwhelming notion that it was just not as easy to be a teacher or an administrator this year, or a parent educator this year, as it would have been in past times.
Jonathan, what does new staff questions even mean?
They're the ones that you're asked only if in your first three years of being in our employment. And they would be around, did you get training? Did you get a mentor? That kind of thing. And I can go over them if you want, but...
It just seemed a little vague. Is it like them asking questions? Or anyway, it's fine. It just, that one seemed not self-explanatory to me. But we can move on unless anybody else? Kitty?
What does the category professional refer to?
It's, sorry, I'm laughing because I got cut off. It's professional development. And it's one where we would be astonished if results hadn't gotten a little lower, given that a lot of that just had to be canceled. All right, moving on. So, and just a reminder of how to read this kind of chart, okay? So you've got some gray bars. Those gray bars, grayish to tan, show what the percentage is of a group of students in the population. And then overlaid on those bars is a bar that in this case is blue or orange, showing how well students in that group did in getting this kind of outcome. Here it's a positive outcome, an opportunity around math acceleration, how well that group did compared to the population overall. So when we see an orange bar for Latinx students here, we see that they're representing a little under 10% of the students who had a math acceleration opportunity. That result is not as high as what we're seeing in the population relative to their percentage in the population. Right, so that's the idea here. The particulars of this way of counting is we do it at checkpoint grades, fifth, eighth, and 11th. And at each of those grades, we're asking, is the student in a math class that is one grade level or more above what it is that's ordinarily taken? So it would be a sixth grader higher math course in grade five, algebra higher at eighth grade, and pre-calculus higher at grade 11. So the pattern that we see is a pretty consistent gap over time for Latinx students. And while we do see a two percentage point gap improvement for students who are free and reduced lunch eligible, right? That's a positive indicator. And one we need to interpret a little cautiously. The reason we need to interpret these and any other end-of-year free and reduced lunch measure cautiously is that because a large number of students were moved into free and reduced lunch eligibility based on losing housing during the fire.
It's the difference between situational poverty and generational poverty. Right, as we think about how poverty impacts students' abilities to access educational opportunities. So to Jonathan's point, I think that as we go through the slides, you will see some bright spots in regards to the progress that we've made in free and reduced lunch and reducing some of those gaps. We haven't dug into the extent on whether or not that was the reason that those things have been reduced. I think that we did feel like that it was very transparent to acknowledge that to our community, that we're not, that there is a potential that this could have impacted the way some of these indicators have been moving. So we just wanted to share that.
I think Kitty has a question.
Kitty?
I still don't understand this graph very well. So on the upper-left, difference from student body percentage. So it's, I'm confused. So is it saying that the, for example, Hispanic-Latino are less than negative? I don't even understand.
Rob's going to explain it.
Okay, thank you.
So what this would say, so let's take Hispanic-Latino for example, Kitty. Right, so the green bar shares and notifies and tells you that 20% of our students in BVSD are Hispanic-Latino. The orange bar designates the percentage of Hispanic-Latino students that make up all of the students that are participating in an advanced math class, fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. And the way that we're trying to show disproportionality, and for example, for students with two or more races, there is not disproportionality there because it is within 3% to 5% of the total population for the entire district is represented. But here you can see our Hispanic-Latino students are significantly underrepresented in advanced math acceleration classes. And any, as you go through these slides, any bar that is bright orange, right? There is less than 3%, negative 3%. And any that's blue is 5% or greater. Does that clarify?
Rob, what does the 193s?
That's the number of students. You're going to see this view over and over again because this is the view that we've developed in VisLab to be able to be part of our dashboard, our public dashboard that we worked with our group to develop.
So go through that with me one more time. So there's 193 Latino students in accelerated math classes?
Yes.
And out of the 193, 10% of them are, what is that?
No, so 20% of all students are Hispanic-Latino. 193 students are in accelerated math classes. So this compares the total number of students in a visual to the actual number of students participating. Does that help?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Kitty, did that clarify?
Yes, thank you.
You sure? I'm happy to come up to the board at any time during the presentation.
You're a great teacher, man.
All right. Taking a look at interventions delivered to impacted student groups, what we're seeing here is that at kindergarten through 12th grade, interventions are delivered to impacted student groups at a higher rate than the district average. So this is a change from 2019-20, when there was little or no difference. So among students who receive low reading test scores but are not receiving special education services and are not designated as non-English proficient, the percentage of Latinx and free and reduced lunch eligible students receiving one or more interventions is greater than the overall percentage of students who receive these interventions. And when we look at a subset of that data that we just showed you, we're also seeing that at elementary, the interventions are being delivered to impacted student groups at a higher rate than at the district average. So this is also a change from 1920, when there was little to no difference. So among elementary students who receive low reading test scores but are not receiving special education services and are not designated as non-English proficient, the percentage of Latinx and free and reduced lunch eligible students receiving one or more interventions is greater than the overall percentage of students who receive these interventions.
Can you say that one more time?
Yes.
Please.
So among elementary students who receive low reading test scores but are not receiving special education services and are not designated as non-English proficient, the percent of Latinx and FRL eligible students receiving one or more interventions is greater than the overall percentage of students who receive these interventions.
I think this is an important slide to take a pause and note because I think this is a very promising leading indicator, right? In 2019, we could not say this is true. We would say that our interventions were also disproportionate as our results were, right? And as board, as you'll recall, I've shared this mantra with you, with DAC, with all the groups that I've had a chance to speak with. Opportunity leads to growth, leads to achievement. This defines opportunity. And we think about elementary interventions, right? That we have closed that disproportionality. We've closed that gap on opportunity, which is the first step to then hope for growth, then reach for achievement.
So let me understand, the intervention is an opportunity?
Yes. If you think about asking kids who aren't getting appropriate interventions to make up two years' worth of reading growth deficiency in a year just by chance, well, it'll never happen. You have to ensure that they're getting the right intervention, right? As a basis, as a minimum bar, right? Then we have to make sure that those interventions work, right? And then once we know that those interventions work and the right kids are in the interventions, then you'll see the growth and then you'll see the achievement.
So if you look at this particular slide, where the Hispanic-Latino student at the elementary level is receiving 3% to 5% more interventions. And you go to the slide prior to that, where you look at the K-12 interventions delivered to impacted student groups at higher rate. And we're, I'm sorry. And we're seeing, we're seeing that Hispanic and Latino students, so there's a good correlation there in terms of the more interventions, the higher impact it has, it has, had, right? Is that the way I should be reading that, or am I reading it wrong?
So it's showing that when we're looking at all of the kids in BVSD who get reading interventions, of those who have a significant reading deficiency test score, that there is a greater proportion of those among Latinx students. So we're moving towards gap closing by making sure that the percentage of Latinx kids who get interventions is higher than the percentage of kids in other groups. the percentage of kids in other groups. And this is the data for all of BVSD and the other slides was hunting on the elementary level to make sure we were doing our job there also.
I'm just processing right now because if a parent was to come and ask me to explain this slide, I'm going to say, go see Jonathan, because I -- no way. I think it would help me if I understood it better so that I could, in talking to Latino parents, be able to say, yeah, this is happening, yeah.
What I think might be helpful is as we conclude this slide, conclude this presentation, if there are slides that you're interested in and would like talking points on how to explain those slides, that we're happy to provide those for you all.
And I would add that we will be rolling these out in a public-facing view that has extensive documentation about how to read these. So there'd be a chance for folks to be interactive. That will be in English and in Spanish.
What's the timing on that rollout?
We have a meeting to talk about whether the rollout is in the next couple weeks or whether we're going to make some minor tweaks to improve this a little bit and perhaps a better time with when principals will be looking at the data. In the course of working with these, we have figured out there's one more color bar we probably need, and that'll make it a little bit easier to see.
Nicole, then I have a question for you, Rob.
These two graphs do not have the same overlay of percentage of population and percentage of intervention as the other slides. And they have a gray bar kind of running down the middle, either at 30% or 50% on these two different slides. And I was just wondering the rationale for that view and what that percent student body indicates when it's not in that 20% Latinx students view on the other two. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Right, right. Excellent point. This is not the same view as the ones we previously talked about. In this case, what the vertical gray bar shows is that the percent that we see overall is that. And these are measures of how higher, and the color of the other bars is a measure of how much lower or higher than that overall percentage is that we're seeing.
So roughly 32% of our student body has received an intervention and then qualifies by being impacted in that area, and then the interventions are those bars that are across on this one. Okay.
Rob, we're on slide 16, and we have to get to 30. Can we finish this up next week? Will we have the ability to do that? I don't see us getting through this in the next four minutes. I don't know what to do. This is great data and important data. I don't know what you want to do because I think there's some really important things to come still. So it's just a question for process.
I mean, we can present this at the pleasure of the board. I would love to find a clean stopping point if that's what we are going to do. You know, we still have reducing disproportionality, and then we'd have a solid 12, 13 slides at that point. I guess the question would be, how much time would the board be willing to give? We don't have anyone waiting on public comment. We could keep going, or we can come back to the board and do the strategic plan metrics, part two, as a work session next on the 21st. I'd just leave that to the pleasure of the board. You know, lots of great information still yet to share.
Can I get a quick read from the board what you prefer to do? I'm always nervous starting late for people who, you know, are a large audience that's waiting for us to start at 6 o'clock, all five of them. So I'd love to -- Nicole, what do you want to -- what are you thinking?
I would like to get at least if we can make some more progress or if we can hold back some more questions, we can do those after.
We can't hear you, Nicole. Sorry.
I would like to get through a little bit more through these slides. And if we could, if it makes it more expedient, if we could save our questions and submit those in writing, and we can have those at a later date, or like to Rob's point, if we can get through a chunk of this and maybe save the last, very last section. But I'd like to spend a little bit more time today since we're already in the middle of digesting a bunch of it, to make a little bit more headway. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
My only concern with written questions is I think the slides are not self-explanatory, and so our questions might help people who are following along understand. Like I've noticed that with Bashel, I have a question, and then we'll ask, and she'll -- it'll be the same question she had. So I'm fine with going a little bit farther. I mean, please, Sir Richard.
So slides 18 to 30 are the disproportionality discussion, and then after that, it looks like recap and general questions. Do you think we have enough time to knock out this third piece, and then we can bring back those last sort of recap slides next week to go over anything people had lingering?
I don't have to answer that. I mean, we're supposed to start in two minutes, so...
Yeah, I would say that if we don't have consensus on how far to move, that we stop here because we're right at reducing disproportionality, and we can pick that back up pretty easily. We'll just need to make sure that we add a work session in addition to our executive session on the 21st. And I would say that we'd need 45 minutes to probably get through this. Would that be a fair amount of assessment? And we'll skip the overview slides. Board members, you have the slides. You're free to pose any questions to me prior to the meeting, then I might be able to clarify and answer. So then this is really an engagement as much with the board as with the public so they can see this information.
Everyone all right with that? Nicole, were there any that you wanted to cover in the next few minutes? Or, okay. Are you all right with that, Rob?
I think if we want to start at six, it's the best choice. If you wanted to go longer, you could keep going. But I certainly understand that we want to be respectful of those who are tuning into our meeting this evening to be able to do that on time. And then we'll just have to, really, after we get through next week, after we get through the reducing disproportionality, I would love to have a conversation with the board on, did we go too deep? Did we not give enough time? Are you getting the information that you believe that you need to see and the public needs to see? So we're being transparent. We're being honest, and we're reporting out on the good things that are happening in areas where we still have work to do. I think that's very important for the team and I, to be very honest with what's happening and what isn't happening, and letting that drive our work.
So Rob, I would suggest we schedule an hour, and if we finish early, that would be fine. And do exec at 4:30 maybe and start at 5:00 like we did today, same schedule. Can everybody make that work next week? We will work on the timing, and we'll get back to everybody once we figure out the timing. So this has been fascinating and great information, and kind of as you could see from the questions, information the board's just been thirsty for. So thank you because I think it's super helpful. And I'm sorry to drag you back next week, but I think it's for a good reason. So -- and I didn't ask, is it work for you two to be here next week? Okay.
I will -- I really do appreciate the board's engagement on this. I mean, this is the work, right? This is the work, right? You can, if you have a strategic plan with no metrics and no accountability, then you just have a list of things, right? And so I am very in tune to how important this is, not only at the district level but the individual school level. And so as we think about not only these presentations and making these quarterly or getting into a rhythm so the public can count on this level of transparency, but also the rollout of a website where any parent at any point of time who has interests has a place to go and can know and understand the measures that are driving our work. You know, when I interviewed for this job, for those board members that were on the board at the time, you'll remember that I said that very clearly, that you have a strategic plan with no metrics. And if you don't have metrics, then do you really have a plan? And are you really crystal clear on what it is you're trying to do? And without that level of accountability, I don't think a plan works. And so I really appreciate the time and effort and board members. As you can see, we took a lot of time and effort to really make sure that we're digging in and being honest and not taking credit for things that just happened and really lifting up, which, listen, that happens in public ed if you believe it or not, and just really dialing into the problems that we're so passionate to solve. So again, appreciate the board's engagement, and I appreciate staff time and attention and expertise in going through this information.
It's clear that this was a lot of work, so thank you to everyone who's done this. And Rob, I remember the book you gave us with all your metrics at your interview, so thanks. So it's six. A five-minute comfort break, and if we can keep it to five, and then we'll start the regular board meeting if that's all right.